We had a slight problem with agendas, not getting the same agendas, and also not receiving material on the agenda for discussion. But I'll comment on that when we get to the particular place. The first case is 0704. It's concerning section 23.11 Table A schedule of ball controls to change the height limitation of 75 feet, six stories, in B2D to 50 feet, four stories. We had a hearing on that last meeting, I believe. I gave you my paper, whatever it says on there, so I gave it to you. All right. I did, Steve, I'm sorry. I found that list you gave me. I had it filed with Metroplum Housing Authority for some reason. I don't know. Just put it in that file. Do we have anyone who wishes to comment on that, on this question of changing the number of stories? What is the pleasure of the commission? Oh, okay. Identify yourself, please. I wasn't looking, I'm sorry.
Mike Smeltzer, 18 West State Street. I just want to bring the commission's attention that this has been requested by council to take a look at this issue in the realm of changing the last block of Court Street to be aligned in the same zoning. It's my understanding that a number of members of council are concerned with the height of that particular block. Should it be rezoned and aligned as consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as my request? It's my understanding also the planning commission has given this okay on several occasions in the past to rezone it and align it, and city council has continued to not move forward on that issue. So, the decision that you're going to make here has something to do with that end result, not just the ball control limits. That's all I want to say. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think I raised this question last week about the replacement value of existing non-conforming. And I think this limitation could apply with relative east to new construction, in one sense. But it would require if an existing building were going to be remodeled, and it's over the height limitation, the remodeling was going to be in excess of 65% of the value of the original building, it couldn't be done without getting a variance. I would suggest that if we adopt this, we do it with the understanding that existing buildings, and they would be documented as of the date of acceptance, that existing buildings in excess may be renovated, repaired, or replaced at the same height they were at the time this limitation was adopted.
Did that sound like a motion to you?
I don't know. He's supposed to say "I so moved."
"I so moved."
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Probably some discussion. This is the list that I didn't have last time that I filed in the wrong place of the buildings in the area that would be affected by this in some manner. And what... Of course, this is not unusual because they did do something when they had the sign ordinance about the height of signs, and those were existing ones, and then there was a limit on everything, and number of years, and that sort of thing. Not quite the same, but it was a similar situation.
Sign is a lot less substantial than the entire building.
Yeah, just give it to me. Anybody have any questions, discussion? Do you have your list of...
That before.
Okay. All right. Are you ready to vote? All right. All in favor of his motion, which is to agree to this limitation on the heights and that except for these buildings that at this present time do not meet those standards. And so, if they had a problem, that they could be restored the way they are now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. We're all in favor of that. All right. The next case is 0705, and this concerns wall murals. This was... This came from the city council. And we've had a hearing on it, a public hearing on it, and it is to, I guess really, we didn't have anything about murals exactly in here. Were they signs, what are murals? And the wording was to be changed to painted wall, public murals or other similar artwork. Remax should be recommended by the municipal arts commission and approved by city council. In there before, it was the mayor who approved anything like that. The mayor, Abel, does not want to approve murals. I think this... Do you?
No, I don't.
He keeps saying he's an accountant. He does not want to approve murals. And we did have a public hearing. I don't think anyone was opposed to it. Does anybody have any comment? You want to... Okay. I need a motion here.
I'll move to adopt, or recommend, I guess, the changes as proposed.
I'll second. And I have a question.
Okay. What is your question?
My question is, it did say it was changed to say "public," wasn't it?
Yes. Well, I think so. Was "public" put in there? When we... The original didn't have it in it. After our hearing, I have it written in red.
On public zones.
Okay. Because this was the original notice we had for the public hearing.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. All right. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next case is 0703, and this is a request to rezone a parcel on East State Street from M to R3. Okay. That was... We had that at the January 18 meeting. I think we had some information on that at the time.
It's next to the Casa Lopez, right?
Yes. This thing. And this is what we had last time. And we had all the material here. Where's my picture? This one. It's this section right in here. And this is kind of a mishmash. I think we did... We've done a number of M zones that have been stuck in the middle of places, and we've been trying to get those straightened out. And we did have the hearing on that. Does anybody have any comments from the public? Commission?
My only concern of it has been that it brings the V3 across the street and takes this. But if you still go toward town, you've still got Ms. where Casa Lopez is, and the... Like the Altel building, you know, is there. RVs is zoned M. So, there's a lot of other Ms. that have... Or things that are zoned M that have a V3 function in it. And I'm wondering if, you know, we shouldn't look at it more as encompassing that whole section because East State Street has really developed towards a B. And the manufacturing portion was really from Pepsi on down. Pepsi doesn't really do any manufacturing there anymore. So, I'm really curious as to what other property owners in through there would like. I mean, we could go ahead with this one, but I think at some point, we're going to have to address the issue with the rest of the Ms. that exist on East State Street.
Is that one of the recommendations that the commission sent several years ago to council? I remember there were rezoning... There was a whole series of rezoning recommendations that were...
Ms. and V1s and things.
I...
I don't know.
Kind of...
I don't remember.
Now, the last one I remember were the V1s. That was a recommendation.
But we had been working on Ms. too.
This was before, yeah. It was probably in the mid-'90s.
I remember discussing it, but... Because, and I'm not sure we recommend it. We were discussing somebody else's property along there saying how it was an M. And it was one of those Ms. that we had to look at. But I don't think... I'm not sure that we actually submitted anything on that one.
Yeah. Because the main difference between the Ms. and the V3s in this case, because you can do a V3 function in an M, but it's the setback requirements. And the B, there's no setback requirement. In the M, there is. And there's also a rear setback requirement. That's what really impacts this particular lot because it's as narrow as, what, 18, 19 feet in one space? I think its greatest width is around 85 or something like that.
That's the one. That's a different one.
It's further out.
That's further out. This is this one here on here. This is a other case.
As I recall, that's about 18 feet. But this is 80 or so. So, it makes the voting very impractical zoned as an M to even do a V3 use on because you still have to meet the setback requirements. So, I think this particular lot, I don't object to going ahead and rezoning it or recommending it, but I think we do need to look at the rest of them.
Because I think that the setback is from the right-of-way line, right?
Yes.
Yes. And out in that area, the right-of-way is a considerable distance south of East State Street. So, even if it were zero setback, there still would be, for all intents and purposes, a fair setback. The line of utility poles out there in front of Pepsi and so on, that's based... Roughly, that's where the city right-of-way ends.
I see. So, they wouldn't be able to go right up on top of it?
No.
No, it couldn't go up to the street as it exists today.
Okay. Well, I need a motion. Yes. Oh, did you want to speak?
I'd just like to comment. I'm Ron McDade.
You want to come up here so we can hear you? Just go up there and identify yourself, okay?
If I could, I'll review something. I just made one copy. Share with you if it gets a little larger.
Oh, okay. That's because what we're looking at is a small one here.
I'm Ron McDade. I live at 28 Cook Drive in Athens. My family and I own a lot with the city of Athens at East State Street and across from Cook Drive. We also own 3 and 1/4 acres across the street at the dead end of Cook Drive. But basically, what we have, we have 0.65 acres of lot. It has 548 feet of frontage, but it's kind of shaped irregular. The largest depth, it's almost 90 feet. It's 89 plus a few hundreds of an inch. And the other end is 22, I believe. But basically, we have an interested party that's interested in building a one-story retail building that would be approximately 30 by 90, which would fit nicely on a lot. But I've given you two examples what V3 would allow us to do versus M. And Mr. Hazer is correct in stating that we would like to keep the setback in line with the adjoining properties. And we are located between the bike path parking lot and the Mexican restaurant, Casa Lopez. But the building that we're interested in putting on the site would fit in nicely with the V3 zoning, with the manufacturing zoning as it presently is owned. We would have to move it closer to the street. But even in doing so, it would barely fit in, but we would still be a considerable distance back from the bike path. I think we're roughly about 70 feet from our propping line to the bike path. So, if we were allowed to go with the V3, we would still be a minimum of 70 feet from the bike path and would allow us to have more parking in the front, both in front of the building and next to the street. We did recently have the utility poles relocated to the city propping line in order for this to be developed, as I'm requesting. Before that, the utility lines went pretty well through the lot and did not leave really any room to build in the site. But since the utility poles have been relocated to the propping line, it does allow for development of the lot. So, I respectfully request the planning commission to consider seriously my request. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have a question? Which one of these would line up, that plans lines up with the restaurant? One in the further to... These things are back different. They're different.
Okay. I have up in the top right-hand corner the zoning.
Oh, okay. Okay. And that's the M1. But which one lines up the best?
The buildings, you mean?
Yeah. Which lines up with the restaurant? Which building would line up the best?
The V3 would line up much nicer because it would allow us more parking in the front. The road kind of goes in an angle there, right on that perpendicular. And that's the reason why it would line up much better if we had the V3.
All right.
Move that we recommend rezoning of this parcel to...
Second?
Council.
Did you get that motion out?
From that one, have to meet to be three.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're going to recommend that.
Thank you very much.
You might want that for the council. The next case is 0706. It's a minor subdivision on East State Street. Property owned by the Renzelles. And it's a request to take these properties and make four or five. I have a couple of questions about that. Anybody here to make it?
My name's Steve Pearson. I'm the zoning administrator for the city. At about 2 o'clock this afternoon, I spoke with Mr. Spezza, who's requested that this review be tabled. He's revising his plan. And it will be a little bit different than this one. So, he just asked this be tabled until the next meeting when he can present an updated plan.
Okay. Anybody opposed to that? Are there second to that? He moved the table. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Now, the next one is 0707. Walnut Grove, and it says preliminary application. I did not get the copy of any of this until 20 after 2, so I personally will not take any action on it until I have an opportunity to read it. If you would like to present what you want to do informally, which is what we usually do before we start. Now, you started this once before, and it's slightly changed. We usually have a discussion before we go into preliminary approval if you'd like application, if you would like to preliminary application on approval. If you'd like to make a presentation, you may. But I personally won't bring it up, and I don't want to have it discussed because you didn't get the copy to read. I don't know the rest of them, but I didn't get it until 20 after 2. And I'm a fast reader, but not that fast. Because I like to go out and look, too.
My name's Paul Mara. I'm with George Mara Engineering Consulting Firm out of Logan, Ohio. And I represent S&amp;T Developments who are doing the Walnut Grove subdivision. And we're back to get... Asking for preliminary plat approval of a 52-lot subdivision, which we've been here before a couple of times and have changed our plans a couple of times. And the plans for the preliminary plat were submitted a week or two ago to the city of Athens for the planning commission review for this meeting. And we originally had planned to put in a facultative sewage lagoon treatment system. And my clients had rerouted an intermittent stream tributary to the west branch of the Marcus Creek unpermitted. And that created some problems. And the... After long meetings and et cetera with Army Corps of Engineers and Ohio EPA visiting surface water and also reviewing the ultimate costs and operation, everything, of this type of plant along with the concerned citizens of the surrounding area, we decided to not go forward with the sewage treatment lagoon. And there is a different type of sewage treatment facility we're proposing to install. It's essentially a trickle filtration system, which kind of all this would come kind of after preliminary approval. This would be more of a final approval. I just thought I would kind of enlighten you on what our plans are. But essentially, the first pond that was dug would be removed, and the original stream would be restored back to its original alignment gradient. You know, there's a... It's kind of a long process, but we've been in communication with Army Corps and EPA. And they gave us instruction on what they would like to see. We did formally withdraw our after-the-fact permit for the channelizing of that stream segment. And we are... I'm still waiting for a response back from them. I submitted with a preliminary plat an email from Army Corps of Engineers and also from EPA. One said... Army Corps said they hadn't had time yet to review it. This was about a week ago. And EPA said that they were preparing responses to send back. But essentially, it was responses on a stream restoration plan and report. And that was my response to what they had asked us to do. And we haven't heard back from them yet on that. If this subdivision did or did not ever get built, you know, it's something that we have... My clients have to do anyways. But, you know, we're doing it. And I think my clients are doing it in a good faith effort to try to, you know, kind of a win-win situation for everybody. Getting rid of the lagoon, which was a concern with the... I believe a concern of the neighbors. The plant that we're proposing is under... Essentially, really, all you would see from the ground would be a footprint of several tanks that have different... The one... There's like four large septic tanks, two large denitrification tanks, two large processing tanks, and then a final tank that has ultraviolet disinfection unit in it. And then it would have a line that would go to the stream. And it was recommended... One of the recommended systems from an engineer with Ohio EPA Southeastern District, Mr. Bruce Goff, and which I brought an email that I'd got from him a while back, that he was saying this would be an alternative that, you know, they've been approving. And that's our plan to go with that. You know, I'm working on the plans for that system. And then also, we have... There were concerns, I think, from the people in Woodland Woods about the main thoroughfare road that would connect through from Baker Road to Edgewood Lane. And we... Our plan is now to just end that in a cul-de-sac where it wouldn't actually go through. I mean, it's... My personal opinion was that it was better to have two connectors. I've been before this board before for about a decade, and there's always been... You know, this board's always asked for two ingress and egresses whenever possible. And in this situation, it is possible. But, I mean, it's trying to quell a fight, so to speak. You know, we couldn't end it in a cul-de-sac, and that's what this plat reflects. You could always put some form of an emergency access gated, whatever, you know, gravel drive that went off the cul-de-sac on the Edgewood Lane. I didn't put that on the plat, you know, but, I mean, it's an alternative. But at this point, I'm asking for preliminary approval of a 52-lot subdivision. Oh, and let me add, there are three lots on there that we would need a variance for. And essentially, what that is, is that there was a... The northeast corner of the subdivision is the top of a hillside. It's about, I don't know, 10 acres or so that we were going to use for a land application irrigation field. And since we're not using that type of system, I split it into three large lots that would be accessed by a common private drive that would be off of one of the proposed streets. So, essentially, we'd be asking for one variance.
Anybody have any questions?
I do. What's the capacity in terms of households of the septic system that he's...
It's designed to handle the 52 homes that are planned for that.
And...
It's roughly 21,000 gallons a day.
And the effluent then would go out into that tributary of Marcus Creek?
Yes. Yes. And it would... The system's designed to meet all the discharge criteria of EPA. You know, I mean, like I said, it was recommended. I mean, if there's any question to my word, I have a document from them stating that this is one of the systems that they approved.
And it would be operative from the time that the first house is built?
Yes.
Not requiring a critical mass of households?
No. I mean, it would...
Minimum flow.
As soon as the first faucet toilet was turned on, toilet was flushed, whatever, the plant would have to be operational. It would be owned by the homeowners association. We would like for the county... We would like for the county to assume ownership after some period of time. There was discussions a few years ago. I had a letter from them stating, you know, certain meeting, if we met certain criteria, that they would, you know, entertain the idea of taking over the system. And that came from the Athens County Commissioners because they're the operators and owners of the Athens County Water and Sewer District. If they would... If they never... If they didn't take it over, I mean, it can be operated by a homeowner association. It's just, I think, EPA's idea and a good idea that a government or sewer district would operate a sewage treatment plant.
When you have a system like that and it's operated by a homeowners association, does the EPA check it on a regular basis?
Well, the homeowners association would have a maintenance person that would have to submit samples of the discharge and, you know, like a kind of a log or whatever to EPA, you know, like every week or every two weeks or whatever it is.
And I remember that when this was first proposed, there was some conversation about having the sewage treatment system include the trailer park. Has that been dropped?
Yeah. We... My clients were with Mr. Elsa early on in this and because he was under an EPA mandate to do something with his treatment facility. And when we got into the discussions of cost sharing and whatnot, he... And when we got into the discussions of cost sharing and whatnot, he, you know, kind of backed out, didn't really hear from him again.
And there's no way to take two entrances out onto Baker Road or?
Physically, there is, yes. Oh, onto Baker Road?
Yeah.
Not, I mean, no, I mean, from a planning standpoint, no.